Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
So to call this meeting to order at 5:31, January 13th. Special meeting to discuss the budget. Priscilla, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, very good. Any communications and public comments? Anybody at all?
I don't see anything as of right now.
Okay. Very good, moving on. Let's get right to it. Unfinished business for discussion, budget review. So kind of feeling like I want to, I want to slightly reset here, okay? And, and one of my colleagues said something today that really struck, struck a chord with me and it kind of put me into a perspective. As well as Chris, you sent something earlier that kind of helped simmer me down a little bit because I was, I was, I was a mess, you know, we're, we're feeling the, feeling the pressure here, but you know what? I think this colleague of mine is right and we need to slow down just a little bit. Okay, we have a final, what I'm believing to be an accurate budget, so I'd kind of like to start here. Whether we end up passing it tonight or not, I'm not going to assume that's going to happen right now. We have a little bit of time and we're just going to roll through it the best we can, okay? I would like to see maybe a little more explanation of, of budget from maybe principals. I know Ms. Bukowski's out. See Mr. Quadra here, if you have anything there you could add. I'd like to, you know, because I go through looking at these numbers and some of them don't. I'm not a, I've said it before, I'm not a finance guy. I don't, I don't, a lot of it doesn't make, make sense to me. You know, when we have actuals that are low over the last two years and then budgets that are still quite a bit different. I don't know, there may, probably maybe there's reasons for it, I don't know, but that's. So I'd like to slow us down slightly. I'd like to back up a little bit and I'd like to give this budget a good full review that, that it, that it deserves, if that's okay with everybody else. So to start, okay, it looks like, where am I here? Hold on. It looks like it's, the last one that was sent is pretty well level funded, right? The one thing that did stand out to me is Saxons River. Looks like almost a 2% decrease. Kudos to you, Ms. Hazard. So if it's okay, I'd like to maybe start with, with principals and maybe kind of go over some of the things in their budget, some of the things that they're, Chris, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do, I, what, if, if, you know, and this is totally up to you. If the board needs explanation on regards to what we did with the contingencies to help explain a little bit before, and then hand it over to the principals and they can go over like some of the stuff, you know, that they talked about, you know, what, what did they cut for a level funded budget? And what would it look like to cut 1% from the bottom line of each of their budgets? So I wasn't sure if,
Yeah.
As the chair, you wanted Florida to explain, you know, what went into the contingencies and why it may look different, but it's changed a little bit.
That'd be okay. I think I said in a, in a note to you. Me personally, I couldn't care less where the contingencies go. That's just me. I mean, I know there's reasons why it's here or there or wherever, but yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. So to, for Florida, go ahead and, you know, find a place to start, so.
Can I ask a question on that? Since that is funds that are put on there for the board's use for different things, it might be something that we don't, we want, want to have to discuss in executive session.
You kind of cut out there for a second, Priscilla. Can you kind of repeat that?
I'm thinking that because some of those things can affect employment and that kind of stuff, but it might be something that has to be discussed in executive session rather than, you know, in just referring to all of them, because they don't all go where it's been said in other meetings.
You're talking about the contingencies?
And litigation, yeah.
I think we're just going to keep it very general in regards to what we did and not really get into the specific numbers, but why and what you did to move it. At any time, you can stop us and we can go into executive session if you feel so, but kind of want to keep out of those weeds, but we definitely don't want to get into them into open session either.
Yeah, I think, I think both statements are accurate and appropriate. So if we could keep it at a level that doesn't bring us to a place like that, that would be preferred. If we need to, we can, we can, but at that, at this point, I guess Florida, Florida, go ahead. The floor is yours.
All right, good night. So the miscellaneous portion of it, which is where we move contingency. And I did put the asterix here, 9/28. So that amount there, it does include the contingency amount for salaries, but as well as not only salaries, includes staffing requests from principals and the benefits for those new bodies as well as nurses.
Point of order. This is why, this is why we should not be discussing it.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, but I, I think what, you know, what you need to see is that we're discussing this line item, but contingencies are not the only thing in this line item. So allows us to discuss it because the money in there is not just for contingencies. It consults a lot of different things, as it said there, overall school miscellaneous has a contingency, nurses, bonds, tuitions, insurance, everything's in there. So there's really nothing that we, that anyone can pull out, even myself, looking at this and saying how much is actually in there for contingencies. So I mean, it's up to the board whether you want to go into executive session, but I, I don't see how, you know, I can't do it right now, pull anything out there that people can look at and say, okay, this is how much we have for negotiations for this year or next year.
So is that the, the essence of what you were trying to, or what you were questioning?
Yes, the way, the way Mr. Pratt just said it is, is okay, but what was being said was not okay.
All right, so we'll just want to be careful, we're not
Because it's, it's, it's leading to misconception on the part of people that might be doing other things.
So if we are talking about addition of staff, that's appropriate, yes? That's a need, budget, budgetary need. Right? Okay, so Florida, if you don't mind, if you, please go ahead.
So yes, it is included as well as request for principals for staffing and everything. We had to move that portion there instead of other lines because it wouldn't not be then level funded. So that might lead to some of the schools to show that have a bigger adjustment than another ones, but it's because that amount was moved into contingency.
Okay, so.
A good example of that, George, is the Saxons River piece.
Okay, well, that's actually good then, because then that's removed and it's, it's elsewhere and when we look at individual schools, it'd be easier to, easier for them to identify areas. So all right, so we'll just kind of go through and kind of talk about each, each, each budget because when I'm looking at this and I see one school who's made a pretty significant cut from the previous year's budget and the others are actually over. You know, it just might be something we want to look at and, and maybe we can find a way to do that a little better because again, as somebody else had mentioned, you know, the high school came in under, under last year's budget. The SU, other, even the town is, is making a stiff effort to be at least level funded. And I think it's really important. And, and when we're looking at previous years' actuals and they're so much less than, than the typical budget, I think there's room there to, to appease the taxpayers. So that's, that's kind of my hope as we go through this. So we talked about that contingency line and miscellaneous line. I guess it'd be good to grab principals and maybe kind of go over budgets a little bit and see, maybe in a little bit more detail than we did the first time around. I, I haven't gone through this, so please bear with me. I'm, I'm just trying to get a good understanding and maybe we can find some common ground here. Does that sound good? Who would like to go first? Ms. Hazard, has her camera on, ready to roll.
Okay, so you'll notice that mine is, when Kerry explains hers, we kind of have the opposite thing going on. But I'll just, and this is what I said last time as well, but some, just some of the big highlights and then I'm happy to answer any specific questions about line items that you have. But for us, making the cuts, there was $40,000 put into, for a BI. Priscilla, you probably remember that from last year. And because we no longer have paras that aren't tied to students, that money, although that need is still anticipated, that money for a separate BI was shifted into the paraprofessional line item, so.
Can I pause you for a second?
Yeah.
What's a BI?
Oh, sorry. Acronyms, sorry about that, George. Behavioral interventionist. So that was called for in a student plan or the idea that was discussed in a student plan and that was an anticipated expense. So the real shift for us was eliminating that line item. I do anticipate a need for two general ed paraprofessionals still, and those paraprofessionals are tied to students. So it's not just a general ed parent supporting a classroom. They are tied to two specific students as as we are supposed to be moving forward with that idea. So that, that, that's a shift in funding. There is the addition, you will notice, of a quarter of a school-based clinician. So that's being split with Grafton and also the SU is picking up a portion of that. So that is an addition, which is why there isn't that equal $40,000 deficit.
Hang on, can I pause you again real quick?
Yeah, of course.
So, so when you're talking about this stuff, is it, is this stuff that's listed here in a line item that we could be referring to?
I can certainly, yeah, let me just give you that line item real quick.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that as soon as I find it.
I see a $40,000 number for 21 budget.
Yeah.
Not for 22, so maybe that's.
That's moved to contingency.
That's in 442 in the Excel spreadsheet, line 442. That's what, Flora, I'm sorry?
That was moved to contingency.
Sorry about that.
So that's in the miscellaneous though, right? That was moved to contingency?
Yeah, miscellaneous contingency area, yes.
Gotcha.
That's included there. That's why you didn't understand like why you have calculated a certain amount and it was different than your calculations because that, that was added there as well as a staff that she had that started like in the middle of the year. So that wasn't calculated as a full body yet.
Okay, so there, there actually was change that took place there, right? Because
Yes.
Again, if we move money from one line item to another line item, the bottom line would stay the same. So there was additions there, okay?
Yeah, we had to take into consideration giving, you know, the full benefits amounts calculated and the full salary amount to be calculated. That is not calculated in FY21 because the person started and not at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so that's where those, that's where that previous question of mine was, okay, so sorry, Ms. Hazard.
So that's, that's why it's not an even, an even shift, George. The line item that I was specifically talking about, which is the addition of a quarter of a salary for a school-based clinician is regular ed psych services 5341. It's like maybe the
Yeah.
eighth line in the orange.
And this is 4,500, right, for 21? And then requested 4,500?
Oh, one down, one down.
30,000.
Yeah, so that's a shift there. And
And that's, and then we're going to share that between the schools?
Yes, so it's split between, right now, the full cost is being picked up by the, by the supervisor union. There's a shift in that where we will pick up a quarter of the service for a quarter, a quarter of the funding for a quarter of the service. And then Grafton will pick up some and the SU will continue to maintain because it's for all students. So that's just a, a cost shift from all of the SU to portioning out to some of the schools, picking up their portion of it this year.
Okay, so $30,000 is your portion of it?
No, not all of the 30,000, no.
Oh.
Yeah, 17.5 is allocated for that person, plus there's benefits, I think, associated with that, Flora. But part of that is also, part of that money is also for 504 and EST evaluations through the SU.
We need the full 30,000 in there, Flora?
And, and before we keep, keep going this way, I, I don't want to nickel and dime every line item. For me, it's just an understanding.
Sure.
I'm, if I'm, well, me personally, if I'm going to ask for, for any type of cut, it's going to be more up to you guys to, to figure out where. But to Priscilla's question, is, is the, you said the remainder would be for 504 evaluations, is that what you said?
504 and EST evaluations that are billed back, yeah.
Okay.
And we do have a significant number of those. So that's a, that's the anticipated expense for that. The other major cutbacks were with the COVID line. So if you go back to that initial budget that happened, seems like many moons ago.
I can't find my way back there, so.
I hear you. There were significant, there were significant cuts to those line items, both for regular ed and custodial. So originally it was, it was thought to put in for those and now we're hoping for reimbursements for those line items. So right now, there's only the $2,000 represented for both custodial, the 5612 and the regular ed also 5612, but 2,000 each. And then again, while ideally counting on that, we would not need that at all, but should we need it, that there would be some funding from the feds and the state. So we did not, as Kerry will explain to you, she has student needs and we do not anticipate those, although that could happen at any time. But we don't anticipate the need for extra staffing for, for students. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk about any specific line items that folks have questions about.
Rock board, anybody got anything for Flora?
So the bottom line is down 43,000, Flora? I can't see that.
No, um, no.
It ends up being about 1.8%, Priscilla.
Down 1.8%?
Yeah.
Close to two.
Thank you.
That's from the comparison between FY21 budget, not any actual, actual figures. Okay, any, no, no questions for Flora? Kerry, did I see you somewhere? I think I did, didn't I?
I'm here.
Where are you? Oh, there you are.
Well, Flora has gains, I have deficits.
Oh.
So, so in order to discuss this, I'm just going to put out there, an acronym is called Free and Appropriate Public Education. So we had a student who had been placed elsewhere, came back to us in need of services, not a special ed student, so it doesn't fall under the special ed line item, but that accounts for the professional services for the $33,000 line item that is currently happening right now and is projected to go into next year as well.
Okay, hold up real quick, where, where are we here?
So we're, right where Flora is, 5341 line item.
5341, other personal, okay, yeah, I see you.
So that is the big chunk of the change in our budget for this year and next year. And because we have to provide the services for the students and it's not programming that we have currently, it is a savings over sending to an alternative or residential or some other alternative school, but it is a cost that we have to incur for the students and making sure that we're covering what they need, so.
You're saying this regular ed service?
Correct.
For some students that are coming back and
It's programmatic, that's not, they're basically, it's sort of accessing curriculum at another school that we need to provide. I can't get into details.
That's okay, so that's something we need to provide, that's there, okay, all right, so. What's that, 5341?
5341.
And that is a big old 33 grand, okay?
Yes, so that makes a major dent in, you know, what's been proposed before. So it was not a line item, we had the incurred cost this year. We've added it in for next year, whereas this year it was a complete surprise. As always, if, as Flora mentioned too, any student that moves in may come in with an IEP. We have to accept whatever is happening. Obviously, special ed line items are one thing, but there are some students that are still considered under regular ed, under section 504, that requires a free and appropriate public education, that we need to make sure we're meeting their needs. So obviously, the more we know about it and better prepared for it, the better it is. But it's, you, you don't always know who's coming in and who's going and what's happening and things, so.
Okay. All right, so that's one of the big tickets for you, any other?
So in order to level fund, it's, this still has, this is a cost we can't, you know, not pay. So it's somewhere else. So it's either personnel or then we went to and literally specifically line item went down and cut a lot of the specific line items. You know, I did not want to do any personnel and then looked at specifically where we can cut in all of the, you know, the classroom supplies, the, we talked about last time, the capital expenses, the technology expenses. Obviously, it won't cost as much for COVID next year, we hope. But, you know, there are some things that we did try to make some major cuts, but unfortunately, the bottom line, if we keep the personnel where it is, is not allowing us to level funds without making staff cuts because of this incurred expense.
Okay, so I'm going to pull a for instance out here. Thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate that explanation, great job. I'm going to pull a for instance out and maybe you can help me understand. Let me see, how about line in general supplies, 5611. For me, it's in spreadsheet line 325, CES Technology.
Okay.
So let's see, 325, so 2020 actual was $126. 2021 budget was 6,000. Okay, 2021 actual to date, of course, is $242, but we're budgeting another 6,000. So I guess what I'm asking, and I see some similarities in other areas on all the budgets. I guess I need a little clarity there and, and again, I don't want to sit here nickel and dime and say you need to cut this and cut that. It's just, I'm questioning because I don't, I don't understand, that's all.
Sure, so some of it actually is, is expended, but it's not showing up here right now. So we did just order, like I said, I think last week, the teachers needed projectors in order to show from when they're doing remote work or they're doing other classroom work. Their projectors weren't compatible with their Chrome, I mean, with the, excuse me, the MacBooks that the teachers have. So they had to order those, they were a little dated. So those have been expensed, but they're not showing up on the actual right now. So they're sitting in, you know, limbo there until it all, you know, arrives. Some of it, I will say, we have been a little cautious because without knowing exactly what we're getting reimbursed for, we have not expended some of the funds just yet. We have a lot of wish lists for teachers for things that they need, but I told them they had to hold off for a little bit because until we know from the state, state and the feds, that money had to be coming from somewhere. So we had at least about $10,000 or $12,000 in COVID expenses that we've done, you know, between desks and a lot of things that if we get reimbursed, it's great, but if not, we had held off on line item monies. So there's still a lot of materials that we need to order. Ricky might be able to get into, I think Ricky Adams is here. Any other specific technology components? We have some smart boards that may need to be replaced. So there's certainly items that we're cautious and if we need to, we certainly could make another cut for that. But there was that, again, that fine line of if we don't budget for it, where is it coming from? And so for next year, so, you know, classroom teacher is going to need our smart boards. So those, if you don't know, that's a projector in the classroom. So even, even in-person teaching, they still need that to share the information so the students at the back of the room can see, you know, what's on the whiteboard and things. So it's a little bit different than the old school chalkboards of maybe people's past. So to be able to project it up there, we have what's called a smart board and it's tied to the computer. So any open programs that a teacher opens, you can see it right up there on the projector as well. So those are, I want to say, and Ricky might be able to clarify, I want to say it was about 2,000 or so dollars each. And so that gets eaten up if three of them are, are, you know, need to be replaced. I know there's one that's in the process of being replaced. So that's another expense that's again out there, but it's not showing up just yet, so.
Not realized yet, okay.
Yes. I agree, it's more, usually more than half spent by now because it's January and we're halfway through the year. So it's, it's probably more conservative spending this year than ever. There's things like field trip money that are not being used this year. And so depending upon next year and things, so there's certainly ways that we can look at that, but there are some other items, you know, that we're trying to make sure we can cut that, you know, won't infect all of the programming. You know, in the library, that is something that, you know, we would unfortunately not be able to replace many books. Some of it, you lose the attrition or just, you know, students lost it or something like that. Some of the families, you know, are reimbursing if they've lost a book. Some families are not able to right now. So some of it's just wear and tear, basic wear and tear, and you just replace those as it goes, but.
And I think technology is a great example in regards to, you know, the current situation we're in is that where before, we were probably using a quarter of the technology that we're using now. And so we're using it more, so we're going through it faster, but also, you, you know, there's these line items that we've been using a lot of COVID money to pay for it up till now. But also with all this technology, we, now we're relying on it more than ever, especially now that we have remote learning and stuff, you know. So that's a good example of how our current situation drives up the, I guess, the supply and demand for certain items in the line. But if the actuals aren't going to be truly reflected, because in some of these areas, we've been able to use COVID dollars for this year, but maybe not next year. So I mean, that was a good question.
Can I point it out though, that we've got general supplies of 6,000 on that line? But if you go down to line 345, you've got another 20,000 in supplies that are tech-related.
That's what I just highlighted, Priscilla, actually. So I was going to ask, ask about that line. Thank you, great, great pickup.
So some of it, and I may throw Ricky here, if he was able to pipe in, it looks like he is here. Some of it is also for access to programming. So like the teachers will use Newsela, they'll use Discovery Streaming to teach and they'll also use a variety of other platforms. And so those are funding costs that are in there as well. And again, as, you know, Mr. Pratt said, there's things that are now being able to be used to enhance curriculum and it's not, you know, in place of. And so for visual learners, we're able to show some, you know, specific things for English language learners. They're able to, you know, see some better examples with the technology that hadn't been there in the past. And I know there may be some more expenses. And again, I'm not sure if Ricky's able to explain. Explain some more of where he has that, so.
Yeah, hang on, Jason, I see, I see your hand, hang on just a second, uh, Ricky, if you're, I don't see where you are, but. Are you available to? Are you available to comment at this point, or, um? That's okay.
Okay.
Um, alright, so, so I guess the question is. We haven't spent anything this year in that line item, but we're requesting, uh, twenty thousand dollars, so I'm assuming that twenty-five thousand dollars is for something specific.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can talk a little bit about that, you know, you know, you know, being, talking to everyone is that. What you're seeing here is, is a lot of these platforms, um, that we pay for the subscriptions upfront, and we're talking, we talk about platforms, we talk about. You know, um, online technology systems that all the few schools use now. Probably doubles from what they used to, so that line item has gone up, because in order to provide these kids with, not the extras, but the what we need to. Provide learning for kids, whether they're in the classroom or at home, this is different than the, um. The other line item, because it's covering the cost for all of our, I guess you could call them memberships into these different platforms. And we usually have to pay by per student, you know, so that's what you're looking there, there.
So.
Paying for different things.
So I see Ricky is unmuted and he wants to say something, so I'm assuming that we're, that's an expense. For this current year that we just haven't paid for yet?
Um, I was going to speak for the next year, uh, budget items.
Yeah.
Um, I, I missed any other piece, cause I was making dinner, cause I kinda joined as a member of the public, but, um. So, for next year, I think. A good portion of those supply line items that you're seeing, it's not matching my sheet one-to-one, so I'm curious about that, but. Um, a good portion is, you know, central elementary school, uh, basically needed to borrow some computing devices from other schools. Uh, because they were not in a state to go one-to-one immediately. Um, so it's just kind of getting school, you know, up to speed. You know, replacing old, uh, Chromebooks, et cetera, as needed, so that way it is continuing to be supported for assessments and just general use. Um, so those, those sorts of items are just kind of distributed through those lines, uh, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you for that.
Ricky, if I could just interject, and maybe you could speak better to this, I believe in one of our discussions too, I'm looking back at my notes here. Was also for the infrastructure of rewiring, um, I believe it was some rooms that were having some issues. Um, on data access, and I'm not gonna use the good technical terms that I know you could probably use. Um, so I believe that was part of it as well, was the infrastructure for re-wiring.
Um, if you're discussing this current year, um, one moment. Now, let me bring that up. Sorry, I got new glasses.
We, we didn't mean to put you on the spot, Ricky, appreciate you, uh, jumping in. Um, again, just, uh, um, somebody. Just trying to understand, that's all.
Sure.
Not finding on my home computer.
That's okay, that's okay.
I know there are a couple of soundbars for a couple of classrooms.
Yep, Carrie is, Carrie is correct, though, there were, uh, budgeted items in there for network infrastructure, specifically, um, some switching hardware. Um, access points, uh, I, I think every school had a little bit of that in it for this year, um.
So, so, so back to, uh, one of my other questions, so we haven't actually used any money out of, um. The twenty-twenty-one budget for those items for this current year yet, is that right?
Uh, no, so a lot of those projects, um. Were sort of put on hold in anticipation of, you know, seeing what were we gonna get back. Uh, in the summertime, in terms of student devices, after rushing out, you know, nearly three or four hundred computers in Rocketham. Uh, to send home to kids for, uh, one-to-one, you know, schools that never, um, send home equipment like that. You never know what you're gonna get back after, so, um, and what condition it's going to be, I guess I should say.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, Jason, Terry, you had your hand up a little while ago, I'd like to recognize you if you, if you're good to go.
Yep, thanks, uh, Carrie, I just wanted to, I noticed from the second revision we got. To the last revision on the budget, you, um, managed to reduce it down four hundred and sixty-one dollars, so I, I, I do appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to, and I know that all of the numbers, it just kinda all jumbles into the bottom line. But I just wanted to point out on, um, I think it's line fifty-six twelve, electricity. On the, uh, second revision of the budget. Um, there's a budgeted for fifteen hundred dollars for electricity, is that for the year? And then, next part of that is, we reduced that budget down to a thousand dollars for electricity for the year. But the actual spent so far this year was almost eight thousand dollars, so. It might be, um, if you're gonna spend eight thousand dollars on electricity, that money's gonna come, need to come from somewhere else, so. Um.
Yeah, I'm trying to see, sorry, that on my line, you know, my particular, wanna make sure I'm on the right.
Yeah, where are you again, Jason, can you repeat that?
Uh, fifty-six twenty-two.
Is that line, well, there's a, okay, that's line three twenty, three thirty-two in this spreadsheet, right?
Alright.
Uh, I'm not sure, I printed mine out, so I can.
Okay, alright, alright, so I see electricity, I see twenty-twenty actual was twenty-four thousand?
Twenty-four thousand in mine, but I'm not sure if I'm on the latest, I have to make sure which iteration here.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, my, my fault, I was. Uh, it says, I thought it was electricity, it might be COVID supplies then.
Oh, yeah, probably COVID supplies sounds more. Fifty-six twelve is COVID supplies, fifty-six twenty-two should be electricity.
Okay, so you're talking to seventy-nine sixty-three oh seven, Jason?
No, I, I'd like to retract that, never mind, I'm good, thank you. Thank you, Carrie, for, uh, reducing it by five hundred bucks since the second revision, appreciate that.
We're trying every step we can, sorry, we don't have the ability to do a lot more.
Any other questions for Carrie? Uh, Mr. Quadro, I see you're in the room, is there any way you're prepared to speak on, uh, the middle school budget at all, or?
Uh, you know, that's a great question, uh, I can speak with some generality, but I'm not gonna be able to. Um, get into specifics around line items.
Sure.
I can certainly take questions that you have, um, like the other principals have said, every building. Um, has an ebb and flow to its budget that's shaped by the student needs. Um, that said, uh, you know, I was involved with some of the data entry on the budget, but, um, didn't get into it a whole lot. I do know that, um. You know, Karen has the, um, experience of managing the middle school budget to have a sense for. Um, what it needs for the future and can talk to nuances that I cannot. Um, it's something that, you know, I still need to practice for my wheelhouse of leadership. Um, but I, you know, I trust her judgment, and I think she's really, um, taken it down to where she can. Um, I, 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 you know, I know if we're pushed to go further, it's gonna start dipping into those aspects that do impact student education. And programs, um. But like I said, you know, I can, I can take any questions that you might have back.
Okay, so, so, great, thanks, anybody, um, uh, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I talked to Dana earlier, and I think hopefully that between the two of us, you know, we'll be able to field most of the questions. Just reviewing back a little bit in regards to what Kevin, um, Kevin, Karen has, you know. Addressed to the board where she already made cuts, if you recall, um, the auditorium was supposed to be redone, we put, she's put that on hold, there's no. Um, so she, that was removed from the budget, because, um, so there is no big projects projected. Reduced to, reduce the, the COVID lines as much as possible, and I think what you'll see is. What you're seeing now is a similarity between all the schools, not just here in this, in this district, but others. Is that is a very common theme in regards to where the cuts are coming from, and it's, right now, it's, it's miscellaneous. And, um, you know, any major projects that we're having, um, we're, we're trying to hang on to our staff, you know, so I know Karen has, you know. I don't think there has been too many changes to the budget since Karen left, except for where we made it to central office level, regards to the miscellaneous, you know. That we were just talking about, but we'll be free between Dana and I and maybe Flora. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to answer some of your questions, if not, we'll do our best to get you the answers. Um, but it's tough to, uh, until we know what the questions are, so shoot away.
Yeah, does anybody have any direct questions about line items or any general questions, um, for either of those, uh, Priscilla, I see your hand up.
Um, I have a question, because the budget last year, um, as far as the staffing and the teachers. Included a foreign language teacher, and I'm seeing that we still have the same, um, level of budgeting for teachers. Hmm, this coming year, whereas we had put that additional in last year, so it seems to me that. It, that line items that are associated with that would need to be decreased.
Well, I mean, I, I believe, you know, I can't be a hundred percent sure, but I, I remember talking to Karen and Dana, chime in when you can, is that. Weren't looking at replacing the, um. Or, or adding the foreign language teacher, but in that line item, it could go towards another area that. Um, that needs to be filled, and so it was just swapping it off. Dana, do you recall anything in regards to the, cause I know we did discuss the foreign language piece, that was just not something we're gonna be able to pull the trigger on based on.
Right, um, I thought it had been, been taken off, um, so, I, you know, I can't answer it directly, I do know. Um, this, this was a while back in our preliminary discussions. Um, Karen did say she wanted to preserve as much of the budget as she could for the incoming principal, to be able to have. Um. You know, the wiggle room to, uh, experience the school and, and implement. If you will, small shifts as that person felt appropriate.
Right, and I think in general, what we, what, what the administration is trying to do is that, um. If, you know, if the board recommends to, to cut for, from the budget. Administration is going in and seeing where they can cut from the bottom line, doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna cut the specific line item. Um, that's been spoken about, for instance, you know, i- i- it would be a general speed that we wanna see another ten thousand dollars cut from the budget. And the, the adminis- school administration will make a decision where that comes from. Um, so, right now, I think if that money is still there in that item. I would assume that with the cuts that Karen made, she cut enough to make up for the difference for keeping that teacher. Or that money in there for a teaching position, and I just don't know.
Okay.
We approved that specifically as an additional amount last year, after the budget was, was finalized. We added that amount in, and Karen, when she presented to us, told us that she was going to take that out, because. Um, we were not, we did not have that, we did not fill the position this year because of COVID. And there was no plan to fill it for next year, so that's why I'm asking that question. Because right now, it looks like it's remaining the same, so I think we do need clarification on that, because. Now, um, right now, we're looking at a cut of the WNESU assessment being down a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. But we're looking at the budget that's being presented to us only being down a thousand. And the assessment was what was driving our budget to be so high net last year. And by cutting that out, seems to me, we, there should be some places that we can reduce. It's increased from the last budget we looked at, um, a, a week and a half ago, approximately. By three hundred and fifty thousand, it's up from, from the budget that was presented to us at that point, so. I'm not kind of understanding why these things are happening.
So, we're glad you're asking the questions.
Hang on, let me, let me interject for a quick second, so that looks like maybe a, a, a question to, um. You, Flora, um, Dana, Karen, um. And, and I, and I appreciate your, your comment about, uh, you know, not deciding which line items. Um, but it seems that maybe that would be an appropriate question, um, for you to ask Karen when she's available, I don't know when she's gonna be available. I'm, I'm actually have, I'm having a real hard time even considering approving a budget without her, um, presence and her. You know, her approval for what, and I know she's already proved this, but. You know what I'm trying to say, without her input, without her, um, so maybe that specific question, maybe could be something that you guys, um. You know, ask her about, um, does that seem appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, and Flora, you had the, she, we lost her for a minute, but may, you know, she spent a lot of time talking to Karen, so maybe if. If, um, Priscilla, cause they're great questions, maybe Flora, with her conversation with Karen, could address the question. And, you know, maybe we might be able to get an answer, but if not, you know, I, I agree with what's being said, so. Priscilla, can you run, pose that question to Flora in case she can give us an answer?
Uh, yeah, I can actually write it out too and send it to her, but, um, basically, what it is, is that. That the budget looks like it's the same amount for the staffing as it was for last year. Uh, in our, in the budget that was budgeted, and then we, when we did the budget last year, we finalized it. And we added the specific amounts to do a foreign language teacher, because of COVID. The teacher was not added into this year's, um. Bunch of teachers, and so Karen said to us that she was not going to put in a foreign language teacher for next year. And was gonna cut that out of the budget, but I'm not seeing that that's happening, so I'm trying to figure out. Why it is, particularly when we're looking at the hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars that were down. Being assessed by the WNESU, and the fact that. Um, we're trying to keep the budget down, with that going down, seems though our budget should be going down. And a couple of weeks ago, it was down three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less, and it had been kind of added in somewhere or other. In the last week or two. So I'm kind of concerned, I'm just trying to figure out and explain to myself what's happening.
So, so, so stripping that down just a little bit, Flora, um, it's more of. Yes, all, there's all those questions, but, um, I think the more, the, the one we're looking at is, um. Um, that, that foreign language teacher assignment, um, basically was that actually removed? And again, I'm gonna go back and say that, repeat that, you know, line items aren't where we're going to be looking to. Um, make changes, uh, but it would be a seemingly a good question for, for Chris and, and you guys to. To, to, um, have an answer to, so. Um, anyway, I, I think that's, I think that's a great question, Priscilla, thank you.
Yes, thank you, George, cause it's just, it's just that, you know, I don't, and the final bottom line is that, you know, the. The staff and the superintendent do need to figure out if we cut and ask them to cut where. But, but since she said that that was being done, I'm kind of curious.
Okay, so, we got that, um, Flora, you look like you had something more to say.
Yeah, she did not mention anything about, um, staffing and adjustments and that. Um, she actually worked her budget and, and sent it, you know, for her adjustments, and it was just, um, miscellaneous wise. She did not mention anything, you know, like a teacher that she was supposed to have in her staff, and she doesn't. Um, it could be allocated in any of the, um, regular education lines. Um, by looking at it, I'm thinking that it could be in the second line, seven to eight. Um, because year today, that line is showing like four hundred and two. Um, actual, not the whole, four hundred and fifteen, but, um, other than that, I, I wouldn't be sure. Where we had anybody that she would have, um, wanted to hire.
Okay, so at this point in the game, we certainly don't wanna make assumptions, so that's, uh, appreciate, appreciate that input, though. Um, so, and, and I don't wanna be pestering her at all, or leave, uh, you know, she needs her time and space, so I wanna honor that. Um, at the same time, um, administration and Superintendent Pratt. Um, I think Nicole told me that we have until. What, five days from now, is it, I think that, is that what she said, the eighteenth? So, as much as I, you know, took a chill pill earlier and relaxed a little bit, there is still some urgency here. Um. Uh, so, just wanted to, so, so, go ahead, Flora.
Uh, just to be fair, the, um, principals, so, uh, we were able to make our cuts in the SU, not only because we did, um, cuts and, and miscellaneous. It was of different things that we took in consideration, we took in consideration the amounts that were approved. And grants for the, um, food service, which they have, um, plenty of grants that they, um, been getting. And grants for the um food service, which they have um plenty of grants that they um been getting for different reasons. Grants that keep coming out every year as well as special ed, you know, the percentage and and their grants and their coverage. It was um higher than previous year. So by adjusting um special ed, um how it was assessed to the schools. And um food service, that's how you guys saw that we were able to like cut down our budget so much.
Yeah, so.
The principals, if we um see their their variances, you know, taking into consideration that benefits they go up. Um, their amounts and 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 their budgets are not really um higher. They actually level funded as much as they could.
So so uh, so Chris, I see you, but hang on just a quick second. I just want to make a comment there. Yes, I believe that they have level funded in a lot of areas and I don't put this on them at all. My concern and my thoughts are. This board is the ones who are have to go sitting in that auditorium in front of the town and. Get beat like we stole something if we bring something that's, you know, outside the realm of 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 acceptance. So. I that's, that's, that's all. I just wanted to make that statement. So Chris, you had your hand up. Go go for it.
Yeah, you know, I think it's mentioned that the 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 S U, you know, we were able to do what we did. And make the, reduce the S U budget as much as we did. And any S U that does that, does it in hoping that it means that the schools aren't gonna have to. Make as much cuts because it's gonna really impact classrooms. So I, you know, I think everyone's gonna look at this. This is truly a team effort in regards to the S U office in each of the schools. That if we're reducing our S U budget, it's in the hopes that even if we do have to make severe cuts. At the local levels, that they don't have to be as drastic so we can protect the integrity and the education. That we need to provide students right now. So I just wanted to throw that out there. It's worth saying it's. I know, you know, the the three budgets aren't as low as what you want it. But if you look at like Flora said, you look at the hike and insurance. If you, if there wasn't a hike and insurance, your budget would be down. It wouldn't just be level funded. But it, this is, this is one of these things that you really have to look at as a team effort is that. The S U office did its job this time and in the past, it's the school boards have done their job. So the schools don't have to make these huge cuts that really impact the classroom, you know. So that's what. You know, that's, at least that's how how I look at it as as the superintendent.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good point. Thank you. Where are we anyway? I totally lost track where I'm at. Are we still, so yeah, okay, so there's not really much more we can discuss with with the middle school budget. So. I don't want to ask the question, but do we have an expectation of when um? Karen will be joining us or back again, or. I mean, I I certainly it's not, not something I'm rushing by any means. She could take months at a time, but I just want to know if there's.
My understanding is Saturday or Sunday.
Saturday or Sunday.
Then she's gonna have to um quarantine but resume duties surely on Monday. Uh, but I I think Saturday or Sunday, she's she's getting back.
Okay, well, I don't.
Judge, can I propose something?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Move us along is that under the circumstances, and like you said, we don't want Karen to have the time she needs and stuff. I think this, you know, these are one of those times that if the board. Um, recommends an amount to be cut bottom line from the budget. Um, and then um. Based on, you know, and and does it says does that, then we can move ahead and say, okay. If we can cut this amount from, if the administration go through and cut this much from the budget. That you guys are happy with, then at this point, I would have to go in to make that executive decision and say, we need to take this out of the budget. It's not something we want to do without the principal present, but we do want to respect what she's going through. And then you guys can continue to push forward.
Okay, so.
Times that you want to take the, you know, take the amount that like Priscilla brought up in regards to um what that cost is for that foreign language teacher. What is that amount? Direct, okay, we'll take that out of the budget and then we can move, we can move forward.
So I think at this point, what I want to do is hear from board members um and and. Get a sense of where everybody's feeling, what their um. Perceived needs are um and 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 go from there. And Chris, I really appreciate that 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 comment. And I think uh, I think you're right. We're at a point where. You know, we have to to move along or do something. So I'd like to hear from board members. Um, let's see, who haven't we heard from? We haven't heard from Jason Benson. Any uh, any thoughts, Jason, or any comments you'd like to add to the discussion?
Sure. My point of view on all of this is it's, it's great that we have their budget coming into order. But I think our tax revenues are gonna fall terribly short of all of our expectations this year. It's, that's a given. It's gonna happen. Now, do we have a contingency plan for that when that happens? Or is it gonna be scramble and make some ferocious cuts? I don't know. That's not my part of this, but. That's what I'm considering right now is it's, it's gonna be tough now. I'd like to see the budgets lower than what they are right now, but. And everybody's been working on it pretty hard. So. Let's um get some more input here.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Appreciate that very much. Uh. And I I I I agree with um. Your tax revenue statement. Who else? Uh, let's see, where's Megan? You were here. I don't see you. Oh, there you are. You get, how about uh, how about Megan? You got anything you'd like to say, offer?
She had a question. Um, am I allowed to ask about? You know, I I wasn't here last year, the amount that Priscilla was talking about for the language teacher that was added after. Are we allowed to ask what that was? Or is that?
Chris is nodding his head yes. I don't know that he's gonna have an answer for you.
Maybe Priscilla remembers what the amount was that they they had to add back in or a ballpark. And I don't have a point to this. I'm just really curious.
I think it was around seventy thousand, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
We might be able to, you know, look in to see what was budgeted for a foreign language teacher in the current budget. And then we can take that number, work it out and see what the bottom line is. I mean, we just need Flor- give Flora time to to find out if she has access to it.
Um, and and then beyond that, you know, I, this being so new, if on a normal year, we're presenting a a budget that's. You know, even seven hundred and seventy six dollars below last year, I would be comfortable, but. I'm new to this. And so what 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 Jason is saying really rings true. Um. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with with presenting this budget. As if, especially knowing there might be seventy thousand just hanging out somewhere. Because we didn't want to pull it out. So I mean, I'm still learning. This is all still new, but.
For sure. Mister Quadro, I see your hand up. Feel free.
I I just want to clarify because I'm I'm a little nervous. Um. I'm I'm honestly pretty sure the foreign language. Teacher salary is not in the budget. And um, we're kind of having the discussion like it is. Uh, and I would hate to see a decision made to. Remove funding that really wasn't there for, you know what I mean? It's like. Mixing hypothetical in reality.
I think that's a great point, and that's why I keep going back to, we don't want to be talking about the line items if we're talking about cuts. Um, and but at the same time, if it it's, and from what my perspective, it was. Okay, that's a a question that was brought up and it was in it net, and that's for you guys to, you know, crunch out, hash out or 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 whatnot. And but uh, Megan, I I do appreciate the thought that um. You know, we kind of want to, not we kind of want to know, administration superintendent would want to know. If there's just some money hanging out there that, you know, for something. So that's, that's an excellent point.
Yeah, and I and I can say, and I can say, based on all the work that we've been doing on these budgets, I can, I can say whether, you know, whatever's in the budgets right now. I mean, there's, there's no meat left on the bones in regards to providing these students in education. And, you know, we could cut, you know, all the budgets S U wide, another two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. But the tax rate isn't solely based on education, what we come up with budgets. The C L A has a major impact on those budgets. Like I said, we could totally disseminate, you know. Hack our budgets and have millions of dollars less than each budget, but that that does not necessarily mean that the tax rate's gonna go down. Our portion is just one part of the, I believe it's four different ways that they figure out the taxes here in Vermont. C L A is a major component of that.
What does C L A stand for?
Common level of appraisal.
Yeah, so 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 that's true, very true. Um. And I actually, no matter what we do to this budget, I believe our tax rate's gonna go up anyway. Um, for me, personally, I want to make sure that we are doing our part to. Stick up for the, to 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 do our part for for our our town when I know there's people hurting within it. And we know our tax revenue is gonna change. So yes, there's a lot of different parts to it. I agree with that. It's a a great statement, great comment. Um. We still need to be sure that we're doing our part. Um.
So Judge, I think it might be, it might be good to ask the administration, if we were to go and cut further money from each of their budgets. Um, maybe they could share with the board what that actually means for programs. Because in the budgets that are already cut, you know, we're looking at, like, like I said before. Any budgets when they've been cut down as much as they have, you're definitely looking at teaching positions. And um extracurricular activities. And be, and and you're gonna be looking at extracurricular activities before teaching positions because as important everything is. You got it, you know, it's our job to keep the cuts away from the academic classroom learning. So maybe the 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 principals would like to get into the specifics in regards to if any more or. Was cut from the budget, how that would impact their job to educate the kids and throughout the S U.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So um, before we do that, um, I didn't get to hear a couple of board members. Um, so I'd like to. Do that, Priscilla, do you have anything um, um, questions, concerns, anything to add?
Yes, my concern is that. The W N E S U and I I really appreciate them because, you know, what they did there and cutting the hundred and fourteen thousand. Out of our budget means our budget should go down a hundred and fourteen thousand to be level funded. To be at the same level it was last year. You've got a hundred and fourteen thousand plus you've got the teacher that we are not hiring. So there's approximately another, say rounding it out seventy thousand. Um, so you've got a hundred and fourteen thousand plus seventy thousand. That's a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. That is taken out. And then we're looking at a budget that only has a thousand. So seems to me there has to be, you know, I I just need some explanation of where it is and what is happening. Because to tell the taxpayers that we are technically in one. One scenario, we are going up approximately spending of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That, you know, would have come out from last year's budget. It is hard for me to to sit here and do. And yet, on the other side, I I appreciate having that teacher. I know that, you know, programs are so important and educating those children is our job and providing a good education for them. So we want to be sure to do that without hurting our schools as well.
It's a tough balance, isn't it? So I do uh, the insurance thing, that is a portion of that. I. I still don't fully understand um. Understand that, but it sounds like that's not something that we have, is we have zero control over that, like zero.
We have zero control over the insurance hikes and that's, you know, insurance hikes is a large part of. Um, you know, even with the hikes, the budgets are still lower. I mean, yes, we have no control over the insurance piece of it.
Okay. Yeah, I I hear you, Priscilla. It's a, it's a tough balance and I'm 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 struggling hard, hard with it. Um. Hang on, Flora, do you have something um in regards to what Priscilla just said?
So uh, it does make sense, Priscilla's um mentioning her her calculation. So if we look at um contingency, that line has so many other things added to. Than it wasn't in last year. Level funding, the contingency line would include exactly what you guys approved last year. But then we will not take into consideration all of the extras on things that are are needed for the schools like um. Any extra um body that is needed or current persons that we have that might um. Be um, not a full time yet.
Okay.
So, but if we go as last year, if you see contingency fund last year was a hundred and twenty, this year is two forty eight.
But also last year, our actual spending was eight million and not ten million, right? That's, that's where I think some of us on the board are are hung up pretty hard. That's. I think that's part, that's, that's. Part of this balance struggle stuff. Um, thanks, Flora. I appreciate that. Um, that addition there. Um, Jason Terry, you're, I think you're the last board member. Go for it.
Um, so.
Priscilla, hang on, Priscilla, let Jason go and I'll get back to you, okay?
So I'm the um, we we've, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. And we've gotten a lot of budgets uh recently and I do appreciate. You know, this last budget that we received from Flora and all the principals. And you got, and I get you guys are working hard and uh, we all are. So even to come, the alcohol level funded, it's seven hundred and seventy six dollars less than, you know. The previous budget. So that's, that's great compared to where we started. That's awesome. I am nervous about, you know, what I'm hearing about a nine percent tax type from the state. And I would like to see a two percent reduction. To um be in lock and step with the high school. And um, if Priscilla's numbers are correct. She had a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars, she mentioned. And a two percent reduction would be two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So it's doable and I I think you really got to look at. You know, as as working in a private sector for as long as I have, you really got to look at everything. You have to look at everything and not waste anything uh up, including to uh salaries. So I, I don't know the right answer. I'm looking for guidance myself. Um, I'm new in this board as well. And uh, none of this stuff is easy. So um. That's all. But I, you know, I think two percent, you know, to match the high school did, you know, the high school. Was two percent and they were fighting over that as well. So if if they can do it, I think we could do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. So we're, oh, Priscilla, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, yeah, the W N E S U budget had ended up really hitting us hard last year. And we were up twelve point sixty four percent last year, which is huge. So if there's any way we can, we can reduce ours this year to say to be able to say to the taxpayers. Yes, it was up over the previous year, uh, because that's still huge that they're looking at. If we can put it down some, I think at this point too, I'd like to know how much the insurance totals actually do account for. Out of that, and I know, I mean, I can sit here and total it up. I don't know if if um.
Well, it looks like, it looks like fifty seven hundred plus nineteen thousand plus.
Fifty. Well, how much difference is it? How much increase is there was, you know?
Yeah, we could.
Uh, insurance is always does hit us. It's, it's, yeah. And with COVID and all the sickness and all the illnesses and.
So Flora, real quick question, um, regards to that. So the increase we see in benefits, is that directly related to insurance? Or is there other benefits as well or?
We have insurance and we have as well um H R A there. Um, life insurance is as well taken into consideration. Um, any um changes of, you know, like having single insurance and going for family insurance. So it was a lot of different um changes, but most likely is the insurance portion did go up almost. You guys, all the paperwork with all these specifications of the insurance and the changes and everything.
No, you you said, you sent a lot of stuff and it's. Most of it's Chinese to me, so uh, I need more explanation on.
Wise, I did have percentage of increases and decreases and everything, but you guys asked for me to take off percentages because it didn't look good. So I'm here stranded with you guys.
So so I would.
No, I think we wanted some of the percentages. I mean, I think we need.
So so hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let's, let's, let's tidy this up a little bit. So if. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that, yes, maybe that was said some. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that yes, maybe that was said somewhere or along the line, but let's not knee jerk to everything and let's. If it's a board, the board as a whole wants to see a column that's missing or a column that's added. Let's make that a board decision and not, um, so you're not bouncing off the walls every time somebody has an opinion. And if if I have to offline mitigate that and make a, you know, executive decision on something like that, fine, I don't, I don't. I don't care, but. We all have difference in opinions and if everybody acted on each one of them, we'd be, we'd be in a circus, so. Okay, so that's the. Priscilla, were you all set? So it looks like so insurance, insurance is huge. I'm, I'll just put the numbers out there because you would, you would not weren't sure. The variance uh, from the middle school is plus fifty two thousand in change. Uh, central elementary, uh, fifty seven hundred and Saxons River nineteen thousand in change, so. Fifty two, fifty eight, seventy eight ish, seventy eight thousand.
Seventy seven, one hundred.
There you go. So. Yes, that's a, there's, there's a lot of little. Pieces out there that that are adding up. So um, we've heard from board members, heard from principals, superintendent Flora. Any other, Chris, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're to move forward this night, I think the board needs to vote on an amount that you want the budget to come down.
So that's, that's where I was headed, yeah.
Yeah, because I think, and then during the discussion, I think that, you know, I wouldn't, I would be surprised if the. Principals couldn't tell you right off the bat. Based on the amount, what's going to have, you know, what? If that's what you want, what is going to have to to go? And like I said before. Um, I've been doing this long enough to know, especially at the elementary and middle school levels, you're looking at teaching positions, after school activities. And athletics would be, would go before um, we look at anything that's going to directly impact the classroom, so.
Thanks, Chris, that's uh, I appreciate that. Well, uh, Priscilla.
Yeah, um, we haven't talked about the capital um. Improvements and the capital reserve fund, there should be, in my estimate, at least three hundred thousand in the capital reserve fund. That can offset the capital stuff that that we may be putting in. I saw ten thousand five hundred on one line for capital improvements. And I know we probably need to do some because we haven't done, we didn't do the auditorium at the land. And Karen also said it didn't need to be done next year because it hadn't been used much, so we could hold off on that. But um, Carrie mentioned a couple, but that's also offset with that. That capital reserve, there was two hundred thousand that was put in the fund in two thousand nineteen. Two hundred thousand and there was another hundred thousand that was put in 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 um, two thousand twenty. And some of those things was things that we voted to be there are going to, should be in the revenue lines on the. In the budget area, they're not in the budget, but they'd be in the revenue side of it. And they can offset and reduce some of our sale, our taxes too.
Well, that can reduce taxes. So that was a question I was going to have for Flora. And Jason, I see your hand and Chris, I see you got something also. Uh, when I think of these surplus amounts that get transferred over to a following. A couple of years later or whatnot, is that just, that doesn't, it's not something that's reflected in the budget, right? That's just something that, what do we cut a check to the town or something? To, for, how does that, how does that offer? How does that work? Those surplus amounts and 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 actually goes back to what Priscilla was saying about capital reserve funds. Where, where's, that's got to be in the revenue, right? Like she was saying? The revenue section somewhere. Flora, I guess that's for you.
Yes, that that is. I did send you guys a um, a revenue and an expenditure report for the previous year. So you guys could um, have that information.
Okay, so, so, so for this discussion, Priscilla, I think that may be outside of what we're. Uh, this right here, or is that, so, so there, basically, it sounds like there, there's money if something happens. Is that?
I mean, if when you look at the capital funds, it's never a good idea to drain your, what you have set aside for um, anything. Because if you have, because if you take and you take that out of the budget and something happens to your building and you have to do it. Now we're looking at deficit spending and we know we can't do that.
So I guess what I'm saying is there's money that came in from a previous year to use for capital expenses or use to go toward the tax revenue. That's not part of this budget. That's not included in in what we're seeing, right? Good, okay.
No, I mean, each, it's from my experience being around the table at the Rocky Ham, what happens is that when you have that surplus. The, the, the board votes on, a portion of it can go back to, you know. Take back the, you know, the amount of taxes that are paying and some of it would be put in a capital, you know, for capital projects. Not all of it goes one way and that's what becomes the article that the voters vote on is we got to see what can we do with it.
Yeah, so, so um, how does that money that goes, that surplus that goes back for taxes, how does that get there? Is that like, we just write a check to the town in March or what?
No, usually it it's it's in the article, it goes back in to decrease the, the overall costs in the budget for the following year.
Overall cost of the budget, okay? So it's not, so it's not, so it's not, so it's not represented. Hang on, so it's not represented in this budget, but it's going to tally on to it.
Flora, how much do they have right now in in capital reserve?
We, we have that somewhere and it's separate from our discussion tonight, so I don't want to necessarily.
I did send it to them. I sent out warnings that were approved. I sent the information that stays with year, each amount was um, allocated to all of those years. I have sent every single thing to you guys.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm, yeah, that's separate from this conversation is what I am. There's money there if we need to fix a boiler or whatever. And right now, we're trying to hash this budget. Once we get this budget hashed out, yes, let's talk about that stuff. That's what my suggestion is. Jason Terry, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I was going to talk about the um, surplus, but you already did, so I don't want to rehash that. But um, back to Mr. Pratt, I had a question, um, why? When you're saying cuts, uh, you said the second thing would be uh, athletics. And I'm just trying to understand why that would be a a cut. Because I I value athletics as a, as a classroom also, so. This, why can't we just look at all of it as a big picture? Why has it got to be like in steps? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, because usually what you do when we're at the faith point that we are and the administration has gone in and chopped away as much as they could. To the general instruction, whether it be supplies, technology, miscellaneous. And so in education, the second level that you look at is um, now what goes into creating a budget? And what carries the largest um, price tags? And that's usually teaching positions and usually extracurricular activities. Like for instance, the SU office, one of the things if we had to continue to chop, we'd have to look at whether we want to or not would be transportation. It's not that we go after one thing or another. We take all of that into consideration and say, okay. If the board is asking us to cut another two hundred thousand, where are we going to pull some of this from? We may have to pull it from, from the class, from a, from a position within the school. We may have to pull it from an after school activity. We may have to pull it from athletics. It's not that we target any one area. We kind of look at the big picture and see what is going to have the least impact. On the general ed class, the general regulate ed classroom setting. So it's not like we're, we're saying, okay, we're going to, is going to go right after this program or or this activity. The administration takes a very close look and looks at all the areas and say, what is going to have the least amount of impact? On the student in the classroom. Because we know all students are in the classroom. And as much as we want and would like all students to participate in after school activities and athletics, they just don't as much as we want them to. So we have to focus on what all kids have and that's in the classroom. So we keep the, we try to keep the cuts away from there as much as possible. But sometimes that's not even possible. But if, you know, if the board's looking for another two percent, I can say it's probably going to come and the the principals can elaborate on this. It'd probably come from a little bit from each at this point. So, but it's a good question, Jason. I mean, that's, I think that's just the order how it goes. We don't look, focus on one the other. We just look at it all and, you know, and then propose it back to the board.
And thank you for that explanation. Ever, I just, from when I watch the news or whatever, anytime somebody mentions uh, cutting athletics. That causes a break, big uh, ground swell from the public, which uh, I I'd be one of those people. Um, and I think that, you know, I think we do got to take a really hard look at it, like you guys are doing and keep doing what you're doing. And appreciate it and um, you know, I I think uh, I I I think we can do it, so, um, thank you.
So I see Priscilla's hand up. I'm going to give the board one last round um, of comments before I'll be looking for some sort of form of a motion. So go ahead, Priscilla.
Yes, we had asked several weeks ago, I had asked, um, you know, for the staff, the administration to come up with. A one percent um, cut from where we were at at that point. And at that point, it would have been probably at least the two percent that um, Jason is talking about. I would like to see them go through and tell us, you know, get down to that. Laura did a really good job of finding, finding some stuff and and going through it and finding that. And maybe they can't, but I guess I, at this point, I need them to do that, that process at least one more time. So, so that I can feel like I can go to the taxpayers and say, you know, we have to pay all this money. Because it's to me, yeah, we're a hundred and eighty thousand at least up from where. We were last year's budget, if we look at the comparability. And I know some of that's been explained because you just came out with seventy seven thousand dollars in insurance that was explained. But I, I do think that there is some, you know, because we don't know and and all of us know. But we do have some things so that we have something. Um, when I figured my budget, I put a little bit more miscellaneous so that I have it to use if I want to. And I hope that I don't have to use that so that I can save that, but um, you know, and and that's part of the budget process. But looking at the fact that we've got almost two million more than what was spent last year in our budget. That's huge also, so it's two million, one hundred ninety seven thousand, three hundred and forty six dollars more than what was spent last year. And I know some of that's because we had COVID and we're out, but we've also said that we've spent more because of COVID, so. I don't know how we, how we reconcile that.
I think, uh, I think, thanks, Priscilla, I think um. I think the essence of what you're saying is pretty similar to what maybe some of us are 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 feeling, so. Um, thanks for your, uh, thanks for your comments there. Uh, around the bend here, Megan, one last shot before we go, move, move forward.
Oh, I'm just absorbing it all, George. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Um, where are you? Jason Terry, anything last, one last thing?
Oh, George.
Very good. Uh, where are we here? Jason Benson.
I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around our actuals and our proposed and everything else altogether. There's some pretty drastic differences between the two and, and I, I think our taxpayers will. Probably give us a nice struggle at town meeting, but well. We'll do what we gotta and we'll make things happen, so anyways, that's that.
Very good, thank you. Um, I don't think we need to have any more discussion. So one of the two things I'm looking for a motion for. I'm pretty sure it's not going to be uh, a motion to approve or disapprove at this point. So, I mean, if I got the, if I got the feeling that that was going to be the case, I'd ask it, but I think it's just going to waste time, so. I'm looking for a motion on what we want. Uh, Superintendent Pratt administration to come back with. As an alternative budget to this one, in in a revised, so keep this one as is, of course, Flora and and. And save it as a new, but um. I, I have a number in my mind. I don't know that it's matched a number that anybody else has said, but I I'd be willing to take a motion for, to start a conversation on, on that. On, on, on what we want to um, want administration to to do and Superintendent Pratt and Flora.
George, I, I'd actually like to hear what your number is.
My number is, and this is a general number, my number is about between the two of you. And that's only, the only reason is because um. Balance purposes, so if Priscilla was to say, hey, I would like to make a motion to to, to see what one percent looks like. I'm probably not going to fight it. If you made a motion, what's two percent look like, I'm probably not going to fight it. So I'm asking for a motion right now to um, on what we want to see.
I'd like to make a motion, George.
Excellent. What's that motion?
I'd like to uh, make a motion that the Rocky Ham School Board uh, reduce the budget by one point five percent.
Thanks. And also, uh, I'm sorry, do I need a second, Priscilla? You always tell me I don't, but I feel like I do.
You, you don't, but but friendly amendment maybe that they um, develop a, a budget. That shows us what one point five percent would look like and tell us what the impact is from that.
Okay, so at that point, previous to Jason jumping in, I would have asked him if that was okay, right? If he was good with that? That's what I've seen David Clark do, so.
We're learning.
Oh, and one point five percent from what?
From the uh, reduction from, that's a good.
Bottom line, the bottom line.
The current, in the current budget that was proposed today.
It's going to be one point five percent from the bottom line and I would prefer that be an actual number tied to that.
Okay, so um, one point five percent of the bottom line, which is um, ten, ten million eight eight seven. Nine ninety six, one point five percent of that is one six three, one nine. A three, three one nine with ninety four cents, so. A hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty, just around it.
Hundred and sixty three thousand dollars.
Three hundred and twenty, three thousand three hundred twenty.
A lot of money.
Yes, so um, the new balance after that will, will be ten million, seven hundred and twenty four thousand. Six hundred and seventy six dollars.
Laura, can you say that one more time? My pencil wasn't fast enough.
Yes, ten million, seven hundred and twenty four thousand, six hundred and seventy six.
Thank you.
That will be with a cut of one point five percent.
It's a big number, isn't it? So.
And that's an alternative.
Hang on.
Not destroying this one.
So I want to be clear on what we're asking for in the form of a motion. So the motion is, we're asking for a budget reduction option. Of one point five percent off the bottom line, which equates to a hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, three hundred. Hundred sixty three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Is that? Uh, from the bottom line, so that's the motion that I'm hearing. Is that? Uh, any other discussion on that motion? I'm sorry. Are we ready to vote on that? Priscilla, go ahead.
George, and and just to make it absolutely clear that that's another budget, not, we want to keep this one intact. So we can look at, keep looking at this one.
She's got that, so. I guess if there, does there, anybody have any, Chris, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you for letting me speak to this. Um, that, that's, that's a lot of money and I think if you, you know, because. The principals have been ready for a while now to tell you exactly what. They would have, you know, what they would be looking at to cut, so that they could tell you that tonight. But also, keep in mind, you cut this much from the budget down the road, if we're not able to provide the service. If we're not able to provide the services we can for students, it could cost you double that in out of district placement. Just, just a thought.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, any other discussion on the motion, discussion amendments, uh, anything? I'm seeing, I'm seeing nothing. So it's time for a vote on that motion. The motion is to see um. Budget reduction option of one point five percent, which equates to a hundred and sixty three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. From the bottom line of this budget, this current budget. Was that correct? Did I read that, say that correctly? Are, it sounds like we're may- maybe no other um, discussion. Are we ready to vote? Priscilla?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Uh, who's next here? Jason Terry?
Yes.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this is not saying that. So the motion passes um, to, to ha- have them provide that, that option. This is not saying this is what is going to happen. It's what will it look like? What are the implications gonna be? Okay, so we only have five days. So. Chris, when you wanna uh, Chris, when, when, when's your uh, you and your team, principals, when?
But I thi- I think the motion was made and it was passed. I think um, we, we need to give the principals an opportunity to tell you straight up what that means. If this budget goes through, it's finalized. Cause I mean, they're like me right now.
It's not finalized.
I didn't say that. I said if it goes through, it's finalized.
Okay, so.
If we're, if we're asking to them to go back and cut this much, I think you guys deserve to know what the possible impacts are gonna be.
Sure. And, and that, that would be a, a certainly a requirement. We wanna know what the impacts of that would be. Um. Right now, it would be kinda shooting from the hip, but if uh, principals would like to um, say, say some things, then I, I would welcome that. Anybody has any? Carrie, go ahead.
So I just want everybody to realize that when you level fund, it's level funding and that's fine. It is, it's the same as it was before. But the expenses are not the same as it was before. So it does affect something. So we can certainly look back. I will definitely re- agree with Ricky. Excuse me, um, for, you know, say the technology line item and things. Um, and there's ways that maybe we can tighten even more and put off some improvements. Absolutely. Um, but there are many things that are just not able to be changed. Like I said, the free and appropriate public education. We have to provide the services. Students who have IEPs, we have to provide the one-on-one services if that's what the team has said. Um, so it's not like I can just cut a para or just cut other things too. So. Excuse me, it's just dry. Um, so we will definitely take a look at it and get back to you on that.
Thank you. And I, I, I think I, I really truly believe that's uh, what, what this board is, is, is asking. Um, I mean, I could be wrong, but that's the feeling I get is, you know, where is there any piece of fat that can be trimmed off the bone at all? And um. So thank you. I appreciate those, those comments. I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Hang on, hang on, Flora. Uh, Laura, go ahead.
Sure, much like um, Carrie just said, um, um, we start, and Chris also said, so then we start looking at. Uh, things that do directly impact students um, and the building itself as well. So from my perspective, I'd be going back to Rick Schuman to see if there are any tweaks that he can make uh, to Ricky. Um, for technology. And then, you know, um, going again with a, a finer tooth comb, if you will. Uh, and, and nickel and diming some things before I uh, even looked at cutting staff. Um. And as Chris said, that's where a bulk of our budget comes from is personnel. I mean, that's just how it works is the personnel and the building itself. Um, but uh, I would, in order to maintain uh, the integrity and the level of education that we currently provide. That would be a last resort for me. So um, I'm happy to, to share with you uh, at the next time we meet. What uh, impacts that would have so that you have more information to make a um, a more informed decision.
Exactly. That's, I think that's exactly what we, what we'd want. Uh, Laura, thank you. Um. Uh, and let's see where, Mr. Quadro, if you have anything to add, feel free.
Yeah, I actually do have a specific list. Um, and this was to uh, get us to a full uh, roughly one percent reduction. So this isn't quite to where you would want it to be. Um.
So just to clarify, that, that's, that's just what we were asking uh, to, 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 to look at. So I appreciate. Uh, whatever you're about to say, one percent, I certainly wanna give one percent. So thanks. Go ahead.
Um, you know, as indicated by Mr. Pratt, it's gonna um, dig into our extracurriculars, curriculars some. Um, I, I can't tell you if it's gonna be um, like for basketball season, taking a team away from. You know, the boys and the girls, or if it would be that all the teams would be disappearing. I'm not sure. We'd have to really get in and crunch it, but. We were talking about probably having to have the program. Um, eliminate the athletic director. Um, you know, possibly it's gonna impact uh, the chorus and band stipends. Um, yearbook, uh, you're starting to talk about, um, we put money into the AIM program. And so. You know, it's, you know, you're impacting arts across the board um, that take place after school. Which in a way is devastating, especially in times like these when the arts are so important for the students. Um, in addition, you know, we could go back and reduce supply budgets. We can reduce technology budgets. And then, of course, as things start to break because of wear and tear, I, I don't know what happens then. Um, there might be a reduction in time for like a building para uh, of half, halftime or something of the sort. You know, honestly, one, one percent is gonna dig in to the school um, in an impactful way. One and a half percent, I can't tell you, but it's gonna dig deeper. Um, but you know, we, we can go back and take a look at things. You know, you have to maintain supervision for the students and the academic programs. And once you start peeling away personnel, that spider web, which is so delicate, starts to shake. And unravel pretty quickly.
Thank you. Appreciate your uh, your words and um, and your insight there. Um, yeah, I think this board understands um, what it's asking. And, and, and as I said before, it's not necessarily saying that we. Are gonna ask for that, you know, when it comes. I, I, I certainly don't wanna impact the um, learning experience for kids. They need all the help they can get right now. Um, um, me personally, and where is there any ounce of fat that can be trimmed off of a. Whatever line item, I have no clue. That's, that's kind of the essence of, for me personally. Um, one and a half percent is just a, a. A number. It's the number the board voted on. Um, so we'll see what it looks like. Um. Any other uh, topics of conversation regarding the budget? I'm hearing none. When do we wanna reconvene? Chris, when?
Comments first? The director's comments first or after?
Yeah, we don't have a spot anywhere on here for um, next board, next meeting. So I'd like to actually schedule one.
Well, you guys are on the, on the agenda for the nineteenth. I mean, the, the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, which is next Tuesday, I believe. That's the soonest we'd be able to get a board meeting in because of uh, everyone, eh, every other night is full.
Well, eighteenth is our deadline, right?
Yeah, but you know, we, we gotta do what we gotta do. I mean, uh.
Well, I don't know what happens if we don't meet our deadline, I guess is what's um, I don't know what that means for us.
You know, that's something that, you know, we'll have to tackle. I mean, looking at the calendar. You have a holiday on Monday, which is the eighteenth. And tomorrow night, there's already. Um, you guys already have interviews that you're doing. Um, and that's not gonna give the administration enough time to really. For all of us to meet and go over that. Um. Friday, but I think the administration's gonna need more than two days to work on that. So the next possible feasible time you can. Do it is, we need to have to meet on Martin Luther King Day, which is the eighteenth, or. Go forward on Tuesday, the nineteenth.
So what do we do? What do we have to ask for an extension from the town? Is that what we gotta do, you think? Priscilla, would, would you?
George, we weren't, we weren't meeting on the eighteenth because of the principals. What is the principal's um, feelings on this?
No, we're meeting, we have a regular meeting on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth of the nineteenth because the, it was Martin Luther King Day and we said the principals had off that day. So.
Yeah.
Contractually, they have that day off.
Yes, so that's, that's, that's fine. So. I've never gone through this, so I'm wondering, do we ask the town for an extension? Is that how it works? Does anybody know the answer to that?
I, I don't know the answer. I mean, we're just gonna have to, um, I mean, we'll, we'll have, I will look into that. But, you know, we don't have any other options at this point.
Director's comments. Who's uh, anybody have any comments? What do we wanna do? Priscilla, you got anything?
Uh, yeah, um, I would like to suggest that the superintendent look at the principal's cuts and possibly rebalance the priorities between buildings. Because Laura spent a lot of time coming up with um, cuts um, when we asked for the one percent. And I know Carrie looked at it a lot, and I'm sure Karen did too. But um, since Laura's were so much and maybe looking at that and balancing it. And order, maybe ordering the priorities. So, since when we meet, um, we can, eh, you know, if. If we need to go one percent, if we need to go less, there's some, a real indication of where we should go. Um, with this to maintain the education for it, for the students. And I really appreciate all of us, the time that these principals and, and the superintendent and Flora. All put in on, on getting a budget together for us.
Thank you, Priscilla. Flora, we're on a director's comments right now. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold your hand for, for. Unless it's something, eh, if it's something urgent and really important that needs to be said, I'll, I'll allow it. Um. But at this point in the game, it's director's comments moving toward the end. So I'll leave that. All set? Okay. Uh, Megan, I see you're next on my screen.
Um, so, you know, part of what we're doing here is what Chris asked to consider. The impact that these cuts will have on, on our kids' learning experience. But as a director of um. A social service nonprofit here in town, another thing I have to consider is what is potentially coming to the taxpayers in our town. And in the form of tax increases and what it looks like to our families that I see in and out of Parks Place every day. And um, and it's not good, what we've been dealing with, um, the hardships that the community is struggling with financially. It's dire as it is. Um, and you know, not every family in, in Bellows Falls. Is a property owner, right? But what is it gonna look like for rents? In the coming year for these families who rent property and live in Bellows Falls. Um, that's one of the biggest issues that we're, we're facing. Helping families find housing they can afford as it is, um, before the property owners get hit with, with. I don't know what's coming our way. So I, you know, I just want the administration and the principals to understand that if. I want nothing more than to give every dollar that they ask for. And I know everybody on this board, that's all we wanna do. My, my voice is getting shaky. I'm sorry. Um, but we also hold in our responsibility. What the other side looks like. And I, you know, I just appreciate everything you guys are all doing and. Thank you for taking one more look at it, as painful as it's gonna be. And just understand, this isn't asked lightly. This is, this is painful. Um, but just understand, um, we hold the dual balance here, from what I understand in my short time here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, appreciate those words. Um, where am I here? Jason Benson. Director's comments, Jason.
Yeah, Megan pretty much summed up my thoughts on this whole situation. And that, that's just it. You know, it's, it's our community that we have to look out for as well. And I know these cuts are fierce, but there's a lot of families right now that their cuts are even worse. And. Rents are gonna go up. I'm sure my taxes are gonna go up as well as everybody else in Rockingham. And. It's, we just, we all have to really scrape as much as we can at this point. So, you know. Sorry for the hardship on the admins and principals, but let's just see what we can do together and go forwards.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Terry?
Uh, thank you for not letting me follow Megan. That was, that was uh, awesome. Um, I, I just wanna say that. You know, COVID sucks. And I don't know about you guys, but I'm sick of it. Um, it's real. It's obviously real, but it's, it's no fun. And um, it's not easy on you guys, uh, you know, teachers, administrators. Mr. Pratt, it's not easy on you. Uh, it's not easy on me or my family. It's not easy on the public. And it's definitely not easy on the kids. And uh, you know, I, I can't imagine what they go through. So. Um. I just wanna find common ground for all of us. And, you know, the world is pretty screwed up right now. And you're either throwing me to the right or to the left, but I wanna, I wanna find common ground and meet somewhere in the middle. So. That's what I wanna do. It's my goal. So, thank you.
It leaves me. Uh, yeah, Megan uh, hit a, hit a homerun there that. I could feel every word, actually. So I don't really have anything more to say, but the balance is um. It makes me not sleep at night trying to balance this out. It's not, this is not an enjoyable thing for me at all. I don't wanna be doing this anymore. But this is what we're doing. So um, I, you know, Mr. Pratt, we, we email occasionally and oftentimes it's very late at night. And I tell you, stop, don't respond until tomorrow. You do anyway. So, and I'm sure a lot of uh, your staff does the same thing. I emailed a teacher yesterday about a personal matter and it was late again, and they responded. So these guys are, are at it full time, whether they're. Um, you know, on the job or not, they're always on the job. And, and I appreciate the heck out of that. And um. Thank you guys for the support and thank you for at least trying to understand uh, the position that we're in and, and trying to. Find balance like everybody's saying. Um, I think we're gonna, I think we'll, I think we'll find it. And, and. And uh, also thank you for the enlightenment on all of the stuff said um, tonight because. We don't know what happens in that, in there. You know, we're not there. You guys are. And um, you did a heck of a job explaining um, your positions tonight. So thank you all so, so very much. Back to uh, the schedule. Our, I guess we're gonna have to schedule it for Tuesday and. Figure it out, right? Figure it out with town mess stuff. Um, is that something that Nicole would be up for? Or is that something that I should be doing? Or?
No, we'll figure out, we'll figure out what we need to do. Um, I think the, right now, it's in my calendar for five thirty on Tuesday. And, you know, I think we have bigger things to worry about in regards to what we're all tasked to do. And if we miss a deadline or, or something, we're gonna have to just go with it and figure out what the next steps are to keep moving forward. But our number one priority right now is exactly what we've been talking about. I think for the most part. Um, we're all in a difficult situation and we understand that from each other. And we just have to continue to move together as a team like we have been. And have the difficult conversations. So um, you know, I think we all have each other's backs and. Um, we'll worry about deadlines and the less important stuff later. But right now, it's, it's getting um, a budget situated for our kids.
Twice, twice today, you, you brought my heart rate down, Chris. Thanks. Um, I, one more thing I wanted to add to is I really appreciate the uh, level of respect and conversations in the um. Eh, I think that, yes, this is hard stuff, but the, the way that we conversed tonight and, and the way we have been has been, has been very good. And I, I thank everybody for that. Um.
You too, George.
Yeah, thanks. So um, so we're looking at five thirty Tuesday for uh, a budget meeting. And I'm gonna have. Nicole leave anticipated a. Nicole leave anticipated approval on there. Cause I'm hoping, I'm anticipating big things, big win and um, something we are gonna be able to go as a team and sit in front of uh, the town and, and say, hey, this is what we come up with. And you know, we need to take, it's, we know we're fighting for. So um, we'll see every, uh, everybody five thirty Tuesday. I'm sure we'll have conversations before then. Uh, nothing else yet? Very good. Thank you all so very much. We get turned at seven twenty-one.